Being 701, we have a quorum. Those members present is Gordon Andrews, myself, Alan Diaz, and Rick Mary. And First Order of Business, I'm going to read Governor's Orders. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Halifax Planning Board is conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in this order. I just want to do a roll call as to which members are present. Let me see. Rick?
Yeah, here.
Amy?
Yeah.
Oh, Gordon, here. You're up top. Okay. All right. All votes will be taken by roll call. Please speak clearly. If anybody from the audience wants to be recognized, please provide their name. Okay. A First Order of Business, there's a bill from the Plimpton Halifax Express regarding our zoning bylaw hearing advertisement. Do I hear any motions?
I'll make a motion to pay the bill to the Plimpton Halifax Express for the public hearing ad.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Can you do the amount for that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
$84 added to the motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote. Gordon, you're first.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Bill's paid. We have a 705 Form A. Let me see how we're running for time. We're at 704. Are the parties regarding 49 and 63 Carver Street listening? If you are, we'll take you a minute early.
Yes, we're here, Alan. This is Stacy Villard.
Okay. Members, we have a Form A that was submitted for the property, which was formerly known as 49 and 63 Carver Street. Property consists of 5.22 acres of land. It is map 71, lot 10 and 11. We have a Form A in front of us. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at that?
I saw it on the table at the planning board. Oh, here it is.
Okay.
I did, and it was also sent electronically so we can enlarge it with a device if you can't read it, I believe.
Yeah, the device has a magnifying glass.
Yeah.
I didn't see it at the office, but I did review it with a magnifying glass. Rick, did you get a chance to look at it at all?
Yeah, I looked at it. I reviewed the checklist.
The checklist seems to be in order. Did any members have any comments regarding this particular division?
The issue that I saw was that there's a bond that's within the 30 feet of the sideline that's being created.
And that would be in what, 71-11, Gordon?
Let me see if I can blow that up so I can see it. Yeah, the one to the, if you're looking at the plan to the right.
To the right. Yeah, looking at my plan, you guys can verify, that bond, it's noted to be razed, and the building number 49 on that, on this particular, my plan shows that both buildings are to be razed. I can double check.
That's what it appears to me.
Okay.
The only issue is that they are present when we're subdivided, that's all.
Okay. Well, you're more experienced than this. We don't typically condition these, so if the plan indicates is to be razed, can we assume that it's going to be? Let me just...
Is it confirmation?
I'm sorry?
Do we have confirmation from somebody?
Okay. We have the applicant, Stacy Villard, you're the applicant.
Yes, Alan, I'm here.
Okay, for the record, one of the concerns is the, there's a building that is within the newly provided setbacks. Is it your representation and you're guaranteed that that building is going to be removed or razed?
Yes, that building is going to be removed as well as the other one that's on that property as well.
Okay.
That side of it, both of them are going to be taken down.
Okay. Gordon, any, do you have any other issues?
No, I think everything else looks pretty cut and dry. I mean, they've got over 40,000 square feet of upland.
Rick, any comments?
No, I don't see any.
We have Mark on board.
Yeah, I just hopped in.
Okay. For the record, Joanne, you can mark in. Mark, we are on item number on our agenda. We are on 705, a Form A for 49 and 63 Carver Street.
Okay.
If you want to take a minute and review that, it would be, the application is five, but the Form A is page eight of our agenda.
Okay, got it.
Want to just take a quick look at it?
Now, are we cutting this into two lots plus the parcel A?
This, it appears to be a two lot Form A. Did you see a parcel A somewhere?
Yep, up in the right hand corner.
Yeah, it does say the purpose is to create 71-10, 71-11, and parcel A.
Okay, parcel A, let me see.
Is parcel A going to join another lot next door at plot 17A? Is that joining plot 17A?
17A, let me see.
Take your time.
Where are you at 17A?
That's the property to the right of 71-11, so I'm assuming, I'm kind of asking if parcel A will become part of plot 17A.
17A, okay, I see that. I'm going to have to ask the applicant. There is a note on here that says that parcel A, which is .34 acres, is not a buildable lot.
Yep.
It has no frontage. Well, let me, I don't know that the applicant knows, but Stacy, can you maybe address that? Is parcel A...
Yes, parcel A is going to become part of that 17A. It's a father and son that have bought it together, and the son owns, currently owns that 17A. They're going to be that side of the property. He owns that 17A.
Mark, does that answer your question as far as that parcel A? I mean, it's got a, it's noted here, there's not a buildable lot. I've seen it many times on other previous subdivision plans. Typically, what it means is not a buildable lot at this time. Looking from town-owned property to the north, that looks like it would have to be incorporated somehow with what Amy had suggested, map 71, parcel 17A.
Because we don't want to create parcels that have no access to them, so that was the question as to whether or not it was going to be connected. I think it was my question.
Well, it was, okay. And Stacy Villard, you are indicating that that is going to be incorporated at some point with the lot in front of it, which is 37, looks like 37 Carver Street, map 71, plot 17A.
Correct, yes, it's going to be incorporated together.
It's just usually that gets a note on saying that that's the intent, that's all.
Okay.
Mark, was there anything else that you saw or anything you're concerned with?
I'm still looking over right now, but I do feel the same way as Gordon. Typically, we do not create landlocked parcels.
Okay, any suggestions at this point? I got to defer to those that have got a little more experience. There's a couple items that I saw that need to be addressed. Mark, why don't you look at it a bit? Amy, did you have any comments, any further comments?
No, I was just asking about parcel A.
Okay.
Can you break his 20 from Joe?
No, I'm out.
Okay. Mark, while you're still looking at, the only thing that I saw, and I don't see really an issue, is that the parcel at number 63 is a pre-existing, non-conforming. It's an existing building, so I think they're fine as far as the frontage, and it looks like that the new lot line gives it more sideline. The only other issue that I found is in legend, and I believe this would have to be changed, where we're supposed to sign, it says Town of Halifax Planning and Zoning Board. I would ask that new Mylar be presented if the board approves of this, just to indicate that it's the Halifax Planning Board, not the zoning board.
Oh yeah, good catch.
So...
At the same time, maybe they could put on parcel A, it's going to be combined with 17A, is it?
Yes. Ms. Villard, is that an issue? What board members are indicating is they don't want to create a parcel that's landlocked.
Yes.
And this plan does in fact reference that parcel, so we are going to need a new plan with the legend corrected. Is that, there going to be an issue with combining...
No, I don't think that's going to be an issue at all. I can talk to the surveyor and have him fix that and put down that that's what's going to happen with that property, that piece, that parcel A.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be excellent. Seemingly minor changes, but definitely required.
Sure, no problem.
The only other thing is the requisite circle should be touching the frontage.
It should be touching the frontage?
Correct. It really has to do with the shape. It was in before we had the shape factor, but so it's kind of doubled up with the shape factor, but the idea is that's supposed to be tangent with the frontage.
Okay, so it's just...
It's just what's buildable within the building setbacks. It's just, it's supposed to show that the lot lines are not coming in too fast on the sides, that you couldn't fit that in.
Okay, Stacy, what's your recommendation there? Do you want this circle moved closer to Carver Street?
Yeah, it should be tangent to Carver Street, that's all. There's no problem in doing it, it's just, that's where it's supposed to be.
Okay. Any other concerns? Is the board in a position where they would prefer to see these corrections made before they take a vote on this? Or is the board want to condition the approval?
If there's not a huge time restraint, I'd prefer to just vote on it later after the changes.
Okay. Having said that, Stacy, is there any sort of time constraints? We are meeting again, I think, in two weeks.
No, we...
April 1st.
We can get those by then, no, that's fine.
Okay. I'm just going to make a couple of notes here, move circle.
So you want him to move the circle up towards Carver Street more, both of the circles?
Yeah.
Yeah, just so they touch the road. It's just another technical thing.
Okay.
Where we have a pre-existing house on 7110, would you prefer to have that circle moved on that lot also, Gordon?
Yeah, they both should be moved up. I mean, the pre-existing's not going to change anything as far as the NR anyhow, so...
Okay. So Stacy, we need to have both circles moved, and the legend changed, and then parcel A eliminated from the plan.
Oh no, just a note that it will be combined with Assessor's Map 71, Plot 17A.
Okay. I can have that done.
Okay. At this point, we're not ready to vote, so...
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Are you going to need just the Mylar, or are you going to need all nine pages again so I know what to tell the surveyor?
Yes.
Just the Mylar would be fine.
No, we need the pages.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we do need the pages so someone can, so everybody can look at them again.
Okay.
At this point, I don't know when your application date was. We've got a certain timeframe for Form As. Gordon, isn't there a certain time for...
February 12. That'd be February 12.
Come in February 12?
No, that, yes.
Okay, so do you know what our timeframe is to get this approved?
45 days.
Is it 45 days? Okay, so April 1st should not be a problem.
Okay.
Tight. It might be really tight.
I do not have a calendar in front of me. Does anybody have a calendar?
I do. I'll do the quick math. It would be 32 plus 18...
Our meeting is on the 1st.
I don't, I believe it's 14 days.
14 days on a Form A? I know it was 45 days, but...
16 plus 31 is over the 45, so we need an extension.
Okay.
Or is it an extension or is it a continuance?
I would say an extension. Stacy, because of the timeframe, we'll need an email to the office tomorrow by yourself extending the Form A approval timeframe until probably April 15th.
Okay.
And you'll get that into the office?
Yes. Should I send it to Joanne?
Yes.
Okay, I have her email, then I will send that over tomorrow.
Okay, that should be sufficient time, just in case there's something else.
Is there a specific form, just making sure that we cross T's, dot I's?
I don't know of a form, but you know...
I'm just making sure.
I'd have to defer that to Gordon or...
No, it was a good thought, but I believe that she can just write it down. I think that's typically how we get it.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Okay. So Stacy, at this point, we're going to continue your Form A until April 1st. You're going to have to contact Joanne for a timeframe. We do have public hearings and stuff scheduled. My suggestion would be to get the Mylar and the copies into the office as soon as you can, and then when they are, Joanne can let the members know when we can see the full-sized prints.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay. Any other comments on this one? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is, it's at 725, Brian Wall Grass Traps. Does anybody have any objections to starting four minutes early if we have the applicants? And I have no idea who they are, so... Do we have Brian Wall on?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
You do, okay. Anybody have any objection to starting four minutes early? I mean, this is not a public hearing, so...
Understood.
Hearing none. Mr. Wall, I'd like to have you make just a brief presentation. I did, we did, I think all of us, whether or not we got a chance to read the thing, got your, I don't know, 25-page packet. I did read it. So I'm going to give you the floor. If you could give us a brief explanation as to where, when, and how you're going to propose your project.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my name is Brian Wall. My partner and consultant Brendan McKee is also on this call. Just quick background on us. I am locally affiliated area, I grew up in Whitman, live in Marshfield now. Brendan grew up in Hall, lives in Quincy now. I founded a company called Adaptive HR that does payroll, 401K, HR, employee benefits for cannabis companies across the United States. Started that in 2017 and still run that company now. Brendan is, has multiple companies he started, but his most recent one is Silver Therapeutics, which has two open dispensaries in Massachusetts, one in Orange and another one in Williamstown. We currently are renting space at 894 Plymouth Street. We have the two middle units, 1,800 square feet total, that we would like to be, you know, presenting to the town in the near future to open a recreational dispensary. The property is properly zoned, it meets the 500-foot buffer zone from the daycare, it's 655 feet. We've engaged Joe Weeby of Weeby Engineering, who did the original site plan to be our engineer on the project. You know, the area, you know, is zoned according to the town regulations and, you know, has commercial property around it, commercial buildings. You know, we are aware of Circuit Street and Laurel Street. We have reached out to those residents with introduction to myself and to Brendan, offering to host a, you know, virtual or onsite tour of what we're proposing for the site. You know, we're looking to work with the town and the neighbors around, you know, improving the aesthetics of the building, the landscaping around the building, and being a good neighbor to both the town and the neighbors. We've liked the area because it was outside of the center where the heavy traffic is. We've spoken to Chief Chavez, he liked the location, he didn't have any concerns with them. We went over with the chief what Brendan has done in other locations around working with the police department to train the employees on situational training if, you know, anything happened. And again, you know, talking about security, linking the cameras to the police department and really understanding their needs. We also spoke with the fire chief to understand his needs so that, again, we can be on the same page from the beginning of our process, and that's why we're reaching out to the planning board. As you issued a special permit, we wanted to understand if you had any concerns, how we can be, you know, work in concert with you, making sure that we're providing the information to you that you feel is relevant for this project in a timely and a professional manner. You know, the location would generate 3% tax revenue for the town, you know, and from our issue of other, you know, how many people are going to come, you know, this, right now there's 379 recreational dispensaries waiting to be permitted in the state. So just this month alone, the state permitted 13 additional dispensaries across the state. There'll be over 65 in the next 30 days, you know, scattered in different areas. So we feel like the traffic in the location will generate, you know, business locally and allow us to be, you know, a good partner for the town. We did outline in the thing, you know, that we will be looking at, you know, making sure that we do the correct thing for odor mitigation. Through the state's Cannabis Control Commission, security is fairly defined in that, but we look to, you know, not just meet that but exceed that security. And as I said, Brendan has done this at two other locations. He's worked with two other towns that would be, you would be happy to provide references if yourselves or any other boards wanted, you know, to talk to those towns around what he has done, how they've been a good partner in those areas.
Okay, is there anything else, Mr. Wall?
At this time, I just wanted to introduce ourselves and, you know, find out what the process was, see if there was any initial things we could provide to your board. You know, as I tried to outline, you know, we look to work with the fire, the police department, and yourselves to make this, in the neighborhood, to make this a successful project.
Okay. So odor mitigation, security plan, and fire suppression program you plan on dealing with?
Yes.
Okay. One question I have, and then I'm going to open it up to the board. In your, there's been some talk that this facility was going to be used to distribute marijuana to different facilities. Is that still the case, or are you planning on having a retail outlet there?
A retail outlet. We will not be, we are not eligible to be a delivery company because we're not a social equity applicant.
Okay. So your, this facility would be a distribution point for Halifax or the surrounding towns, and you'd have a number of people coming in on a daily basis?
Correct.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. I thought we were, we had a sort of delivery system. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up to the board, and then I can tell you a little bit about our site plan process and special permit, because you will need both of those.
Yeah.
What I would like to do is, I'm going to go from the top of my screen. Gordon, you're right there. Any questions or concerns at this point, just on a preliminary basis?
So basically, you're looking to do a retail sales?
Correct. Yep, there's 24 parking spots there currently. Paul Reed, who owns the building and owns Bay State, Alom doesn't use the building, he parks his truck there at night inside the end unit closest to Circuit Street. And on the other side is a custom cabinet maker, and from Paul said he goes in roughly around 8 o'clock at night if he uses it to make cabinets for the next day, and he doesn't use the space, so we would have access to all 24 parking spots.
What would you have for, excuse me, for floor space in there? What would you be renting?
So we're renting right now 1,800 square feet. We would be planning the dispensary to be somewhere between 900 and 1,200 square feet, and the remainder would be a break room, a vault, and just, you know, kind of work areas. And the vaults required by the CCC regulation, so, you know, certain spaces predefined of not size, but what's required. So, you know, think of it, it'll be like a bank vault.
Okay.
Anything else at this point? I can go back to you, Gordon, if you think of something else, if you want. Next person would be Rick, you're on next. Any questions or concerns at this point?
No concerns. You have the 24 spaces. How do you judge on how many spaces you'd need to run the store?
Hello, board. Thank you for having us. This is Brendan McKee. I just wanted to speak to, I guess your question is how would we manage the flow of customers and therefore make sure there's enough parking? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so we have, we operate on an appointment system, and we have the ability on, literally on a five or 10-minute basis for every hour to allow a certain amount of appointments. So we would determine, you know, a reasonable flow and enact that in the appointment system. And we've communicated to the town that we have no problem, you know, putting... So, we would determine, you know, a reasonable flow and enact that in the appointment system. And we've communicated to the town that we have no problem, you know, putting caps in place and creating an appointment-only system to, again, mitigate traffic and make sure there's a consistent but well-managed flow into the facility.
Okay, so somebody just driving by, can you just pull in and go to the store like you were convenience store or anything like that?
Correct. So, we, what we had communicated was, you know, we're more than happy to operate as appointment-only up until, you know, we all determine that that's, you know, potentially no longer required.
Okay. All right.
Amy, you'd be next?
I do not have any questions that would be new. The only thing would just be making sure the parking was adequate.
Okay. Mark, I didn't know that you got a chance to go through that brochure. It was quite lengthy. I know sometimes your time.
I've been looking it over during the conversation. The first question that pops into my mind was actually just the zoning and whether or not that fit in that building was actually in the industrial and/or if that has changed since the last applicant.
I can probably answer that. At last town meeting, town meeting, adopted the bylaw that allows by special permit this type of facility in a business zone.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if that change was in effect.
I still believe, I think they have to meet certain setbacks, 500 feet from childcare facilities, alcohol facilities, that sort of stuff. And I'm assuming that will be part of their proposal. Did I miss anything from any other members? Or any other members have any further questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'm just gonna make a couple of comments, and then I can kind of open it up to the public. You know, my concerns, Mr. Wall, would have been the odor mitigation and the security plan for police, and then what you planned on doing for fire suppression. I don't believe that the building has currently any sprinkler systems, but that's something for you guys to figure out. My other, couple of other concerns would have been, you're gonna be renting the interior bays of these, of this building. It seems to be like it's a four-bay building.
Correct.
Okay. And do you have in your security plan a way to define those, to make sure that your facility is completely isolated? I'm not sure what's in there, but typically you're gonna have either a metal stud wall with sheet rock. Is there a security plan to make sure that the guy from bay one doesn't drill a hole through the wall and get into your bays?
I can speak to the security plan, absolutely. So, we will have a vault that's, you know, custom-generated for us to make sure that nothing like that ever happens or can happen. And just, you know, to be clear, inventory is always taken off the sales floor each evening, brought back into the vault. So, the only location where cannabis products exist will be in that vault, which will be incredibly well-secured.
Okay. My only, my other concerns too was parking. The fact that you've got only a portion of that building which you guys are gonna occupy. I think we're really gonna need to know, when you come in for your site plan, just how much traffic is gonna be generated? How often you're gonna be scheduling those appointments? Your hours of operation versus if you've got four appointments an hour, you're open eight hours, that's really not enough with 24 spaces. The number of employees that you've pointed out in the outline, it's not clear whether they're gonna be full-time employees, part-time employees. If my recollection is correct, you had somewhere about 20 employees. Is that, am I fairly correct, Mr. Wall?
Yeah. And there'll be some combination of full-time and part-time just because of the nature of the business, similar to like a Banana Republic or Gap. You know, managers will be full-time, and then, you know, certain support staff will be part-time, just the nature of the business. You know what I mean? Not everyone will be looking to be.
Just to point out one factor that will come into play when it comes into number of employees, where you're gonna have to provide parking and things for them. So, you're gonna wanna also consider how many employees may be there working at one time.
Yes. And versus the number of parking spots you have available. To me, I think that your facility should have designated parking spots versus the other two businesses that are there. They should have designated spots only for a security basis. If someone decides to park in there overnight, then it's gated. I think the police should be aware as to which parking spaces are yours or which would be an overnight guest. If it's in the furniture guy, or if it's in the Bay State Alarm guy who comes from emergency. These are just a couple of points that kind of concern me. And again, in your security plan, you do have a residential neighbor that's probably within 300 or 400 feet. Is there any plan for any exterior fencing? And I don't really need answers now. These are probably questions that are gonna come up to prevent any, you know, any additional noise or any security purposes, to protect that residential area. Okay, I'm just gonna check with the board. Anything else that anybody thought of? Mr. McKee, any other comments you wanna make?
No, we're just grateful for your time. Thank you for, you know, having us before you on this preliminary basis just to hear us out and understand that, you know, as Brian mentioned, we wanna be good, you know, corporate citizens and run this the right way, which is also, you mentioned, you know, I'm happy to provide credentials and letters of recommendation from town managers and municipalities that I have experience in. You know, we, like I said, we do this the right way, and everyone wins. So, it's a positive thing for Halifax.
Okay. Have you approached the selectmen as to, as far as the planning process and the agreement? I think you need some sort of an agreement with the Board of Selectmen.
Correct. We've started the host community agreement process. So, our attorneys and the town's attorneys are in, are, if they haven't already, by this week or next, they'll have started to negotiate the HCA.
Okay. I am going to open it up just briefly to members of the public. Just bear in mind, this is not a public hearing. We will go through the public hearing process, and we welcome any comments or any concerns then. But is there anyone in the audience that has a question?
Alan, Chris Winowitz has his hand up.
Okay. Charlie, you can, whatever you do.
He can go anytime he wants.
Chris?
Mike? Hello, Chairman Diaz. This is Chris Winowitz from 129 Circuit Street.
Yes.
I just wanna make a comment that I hope the board fact-checks everything these people are saying. As we saw when Bud's Good, they gave some false figures for their revenue that did.
Chris?
Chris, we can't, you're breaking up.
We lost you, Chris.
Chris, we lost him. Let's see if he comes back on. Is there any other, anybody else? I see that we've got about 20 participants. Anybody else wanna make a comment or concern until Chris comes back?
I do not see anybody else's hand up. I'm looking at messages, and I don't see any requests to speak via that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Well, what I was saying is that I've seen in the previous marijuana establishments that I proposed here that some of their revenue figures aren't adding up when you do the math, which I also noticed that when they were at the selectmen this past week, that their information isn't adding up to make sense. I've also spoken to the police chief after the selectmen's meeting, and there seems to be a difference what they're proposing was discussed and what was really discussed. So, I just hope the board looks deep and fact-checks what this company is telling you guys. And I would hope that some of you guys will sit in front of some other shops and see the traffic that some of these bring in and what it could cause to the neighborhood.
Chris, can you speak to the numbers? Can you?
Wait a moment, Mr. McKee.
Oh, sorry.
You should be going through the chair. Okay, Chris, did you drop off again?
No, I'm still here.
Okay. All right. Mr. McKee has a question, but I really don't wanna get into a debate with numbers. I'm gonna just tell you that the planning board's purview on this is site plan and special permit. We don't typically get involved with numbers. If you feel as though that there's some concern in the numbers, whether it be revenue numbers, that's something that you should completely address with the Board of Selectmen. They're the one, they're gonna be the issuing authority as far as the license is concerned. The planning board is more the ground person. We know, we're gonna make sure that the site is adequate based on the numbers, and we'll have to verify the numbers that they give us for traffic counts. We will fact-check that. We'll have a review engineer review those figures. And then, we will go into the special permit process, which we will condition. If the planning, if the first part goes through okay, and we get into the special permit process, then we will be conditioning their special permit based on whatever input we get from neighbors or whatever we're allowed to within the law. But the numbers, I think more, you gotta deal with the selectmen, unless I got another board member that differs, that's strictly with them. And then, obviously, we'll take whatever guidance and we'll follow that selectmen's process prior to our site plan process, site plan and special permit. Mr. McKee, I'm not gonna really allow you to get into the numbers part of it. That's really not what we're here for today. That can be addressed at the selectmen's, you know, hours is just site plan and special permit.
Mr. Chairman, my apologies. I didn't mean to speak out of turn. I, yeah, I was just wondering what numbers he was referencing. I wasn't going into a debate. I apologize.
Okay. That, I'm sure that Mr. Winowitz will be at the next selectmen's meeting. So, whatever, whatever numbers that he finds that are inconsistent, he should bring that to their attention.
Thank you.
They do numbers. Again, we will be looking very highly at the, highly at the traffic situation and the, you know, the amount of spaces and so forth.
Alan?
Yes.
We do have another hand up. Christine Salvatore?
Okay. Charlie will have to.
No, she can unmute herself. Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay. Christine Salvatore, can you hear it?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Christine Salvatore.
Wait, can you, Christine, can you identify your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, Christine Salvatore, 475 Laurel Street.
Okay.
My only concern with this is the traffic. Right now, trying to get out onto 106 from Circuit Street is very difficult. There's always a ton of traffic coming both ways. So, that, my main concern is just the traffic that this will bring.
Okay. Was there anything else, Christine?
Yeah.
Okay. We do plan on, it's in my notes, and a couple of other members are concerned also with the traffic.
Yeah.
We'll have to come up with some sort of plan, or they will have to come up with a little plan to provide us with some sort of a traffic or the number of people. I know 106 is gotta be in your area. Between 5 and 7, it's gotta be 12, 14,000 cars a day. But at this point, we haven't talked about operating hours. We don't know that the, that facility is gonna be open when we get to high-traffic area, number of appointments, and so forth and so on. So, gentlemen, you will, you know, in the special permit process, you will have to provide some of that information. And it would be probably very helpful, whether you go to Old Colony Planning Council or not, to get some sort of a traffic count. You know, they have the most recent information. And I believe down further, it's 12, 15,000 cars a day. But there is, there's some traffic study as to between 4 and 6, or 4 and 7. That's gonna be your peak traffic time. So, anybody else with their hand up, Charlie? Or Amy? I don't, I can't tell.
I do not see any, and let me check the notes again, messages. I see no other messages.
Okay. Gentlemen, is there, well, let me just say this, that you can get a copy of our regulations. You will have to go through a site plan process, which, as we discussed, will be looking at parking and employee parking and designated parking areas. We'll be looking at that through the site plan process. And then, in the special permit process, we're gonna be looking heavily on the odor mitigation, security plans, any fire suppression plans, how you're gonna secure this marijuana inside the facility. You've given us some numbers on floor space. You're not gonna allow any walk-in traffic. I don't know anything else at this point, but my suggestion would be to put in a full presentation and address some of those issues. And there might be some other issues that come up when we get into the special permit process. Is there anything else you gentlemen wanna discuss? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, we'll have Weeby Engineering coordinate that with us and with yourself, if that's okay.
That's fine. You know, I've taken the notes. I've got an idea as to what some of the other members are looking for. If there's something else unusual, then I will put it on the agenda and discuss it with the board. You are probably not gonna be filing for another 30 days or more. I mean, I don't know where you are with the community host agreement. I'm assuming you'd wanna get that community host agreement somewhat in place before you come to us. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Yeah, I mean, the community host agreement now are fairly standard since there's been, you know, 150 of them created throughout the state. So, we would assume that that would be finalized between the two lawyers probably in the next week or so. So, you know, we should have a final agreement to the select board, I think, in two weeks for them to review. So, we would, I mean, we would try to come to you as quick as you're willing to take us, I guess.
Okay. Well, I mean, we've got some public hearings on April 4th. I think that's too early, but we'd be more than happy to get on the agenda on next, the next scheduled meeting, which is probably gonna be the 14th or 15th of April, somewhere in that vicinity. What I would kind of suggest is that when you submit the package, okay, please submit your odor mitigation plan, your security plan. I am gonna have them reviewed by the police chief and by the fire department. We'd like to have that, I would like to have that prior so I can get it disseminated. So, if there's any questions or concerns at our first meeting, we can address that. And I'm not gonna, I'm not 100% sure depending when you submit the plan and when we have our first meeting, if police and fire will be able to respond in that time. We will probably have to have a hearing to see what the residential input is and what the impact is before we send that out to police and fire for their actual recommendations. Because they really need to know, along with us, just what the impact is.
Totally understand, yes.
All right. Any other questions? Any other members wanna add? Anything?
Not at this time. Just good luck.
Hearing none. Good luck, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We are running a little late, folks. We have a Form A at 25 Furnace Street, and that Form A would be, would begin on page 32.
I have a question. Joanne?
Hello, yeah?
Hi, honey. Do we have any full PDF to look at on this?
Not a full PDF. You need a full-size copy?
Yeah.
Those are in the office.
Electronically.
We don't have one electronically?
Yep. I sent, there's one in your packet.
Yeah, no, we can, I was just meaning like, do you have one that we can down? I have it from the packet, but I meant like download on the screen.
Or the screen share it?
Like an electronic copy. It's in the packet as far as.
We just can't interact with them, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I can put it in the chat.
Okay. That'll be great.
Download it from there.
Thank you.
Now, Joanne, when you put it in the chat, does that mean it comes on the screen?
I can get it on the screen if it gets in the chat.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. So, you want a screen share, Amy? Okay.
We did not get that as an email, is that what you're saying, Joanne?
Not an electronic file, no. I mean, like. Not an electronic file, no. I mean, like, it's part of the packet scanned, but not.
Yeah, because I was trying to find it too, because you get it in there and then you can open it up on a phone or something, but this is almost impossible to see.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Amy, just let us know when you get it up on the screen.
Absolutely.
With my magnifying glass.
I know.
Go to.
Gordon, while they're oh, you don't have, do you have a copy there? Can you see that, Gordon?
Which?
On on this Form A?
Yep.
You had mentioned in a previous Form A about the circle.
Yeah, it's supposed to be tangent to the street.
It seems to be a common issue with plans. I'm not sure exactly the verbiage, but it's a common thing to not be right.
Think people get the idea that it's supposed to be a circle that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's supposed to be just, I was always under the impression that you you that some towns do require.
Building circle.
A building circle.
Yeah, and that's not what we have.
Okay, all right.
So that's why I think the confusion.
Okay.
Charlie, can we have that sent to us too, please?
Well, I believe it got sent to you. And also you can download it from just what Joanne posted. That's how I got it.
Right.
You can download it from from here, from the chat.
From the chat. You have that.
Okay, I have a copy here. Okay, let me let me just do this. I saw somewhere Joe Webby was there. Is Mr. Joe, are you still on?
Yes, yes, I am. Joe Webby, Webby Engineering.
Okay, are you here to make this presentation?
Yes.
Okay, let me just double check with the members and see if they've had a minute to look at this and then we can address any concerns. It is on the screen. Joe, can you see it on? Can you see it on the screen?
Yes, I have it on my screen, yes.
Okay, are the members ready for Joe's presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so Joe, why don't you let us know what we're doing here?
Yes, Joe Webby, Webby Engineering, on behalf of Janus and Stephen Hayward. They currently own the piece of property that's mostly a field at the intersection of Furnace and Elm Street. And what they would like to do is is carve off a lot on Elm Street that will have approximately 204 feet of frontage and 40,433 square feet of uplands. We had the wetlands delineated by Brad Holmes from ECR. And I I was listening into the the previous Form A and yeah, we can certainly move those circles against the street. But other than that, they would just like to create one lot in the on Elm Street and then they would have approximately five acres still left with map 48 lot 6.
Okay, Joe, I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna poll poll the members to see if there's any other concerns other than the I don't want to call it the requisite square because the requisite requisite square would be that building envelope. This is the shape factor circle. Am I correct? Gordon?
Yeah.
Okay. Gordon, you have any any other concerns other than the shape factor circle?
No, that drainage easement that it shows, that's an existing pipe. Is that it? Or is it a ditch?
It's no, it's a pipe. It's underground.
Okay. And that's an easement for the town?
That's correct. That's a town easement. There's an outfall at the at the pond.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, I I can't really tell who's next. I'm going to ask Rick with the Rick, Rick Mary. Anything that you see that you're concerned with?
Well, the only thing, same as Gordon, the drainage has been sold. If there's a pipe there, is that going to be an issue? Can it be moved? What's with how they're going to deal with that?
Build around it?
I I would say the drainage easement is on there. It's an existing 12-foot wide. They cannot build in that drainage easement.
Right.
If they would be required to build. I'm I'm a little mixed up with the shape factor circle. If I'm correct, Gordon, if they move that shape factor circle forward, they've got between the the setback line and that drainage pipe in order to put some sort of a structure. So we're a 50 scale. So correct me if I'm wrong, Joe. From the front setback to the drainage pipe at the northerly point during in the 30-yard setback line, you probably got to be 80 feet and down further, you got to be 200 feet. So you've got at least 100 feet in the middle of this requisite square to put a structure if I'm reading this plan correctly.
Yeah, yeah, the proposal is to put us a dwelling in obviously meets the setbacks and not on the pipe. And the septic system is going to be in the front of in that 50-foot front setback. So yes, there is enough room there to build a dwelling.
Okay.
And they certainly can't build anything on your pipe.
Okay, Rick, any other questions?
No, Joe, not a concern, but I'm just curious. How do you get? How do you come up with a shape factor, the numbers? You got one shape factor 94.7, the other one 51.9. I'm just curious. I just don't know how you come up with those shapes.
Neither neither do I. And they tried to explain it to me and it's it's I guess it's a little little complicated, but Joe, if you want to try to take a minute and go beyond.
I know Mark explained it to me, but I believe it's the area divided by the perimeter or it could be the perimeter divided by the area, but.
Yep, that's it, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. So the bigger the area you get to work with, the bigger the shape factor?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right, I get it now. All right.
So having said that, Mark, I'm I'm going to call you my little expert on this. You see any concerns? You're very familiar with the.
As far as the plan now, this is that it's that field with the hills. Is am I correct? Okay, now, as far as the plan, everything looks good.
Okay. Amy, I miss you.
I'm I'm gonna say the same thing. I was just looking at the drainage easement.
Okay. I I I personally don't see the drainage easement as being an issue as long as.
No, just that I was going to ask about it.
Yeah, as long as they obviously this if there's an easement on record, the language obviously might be from back in the 20s or 30s when it was put in, but I I think that the the applicant will be well aware that you can't build anything within that 12-foot strip. So is it it's the board's inclination to have this shape factor circle moved forward or are you guys comfortable with the shape factor being where it is? And Gordon, I'm going to kind of rely on you for this one. Or Mark?
I mean, my thing is is we we've kind of beaten the shape factor with a couple of different bylaws in the town. And this probably is superseded by our perimeter ratio. Like I said before, it's supposed to be tangent to the to the street line and then it's it just shows that the sidelines don't come in so fast that it wouldn't interfere with 120-foot circle. So, I mean, I don't really see it as an issue, but just to clarify where it's supposed to be, that's all. And as far as the drainage easement, I I just brought that up. There is nothing that says that, you know, if somebody bought that lot and wanted to change that drainage easement, that they couldn't negotiate something with the town and give them one and bring the pipe around that too.
Okay.
So I mean, I I don't see the drainage easement as a problem.
Okay, so the the biggest question is, because I'm not familiar with that circle.
So I think since there's no other change required, I don't think we should go through with that. On the other plan, where they already had a couple of things to change, I was fine with requesting it. But I don't think it's necessary in this case.
Okay, yeah, I I'm going to agree, Mark, because I think the the lines are fairly consistent. I mean, you've got 173 on the northerly side of lot 6. You've got 173 feet of sideline. On the south side, you've got 174.
Yeah, it's clear. I mean, we all know that it would fit no matter what. There's no question, so.
Any any other questions or concerns?
No, the only thing I would say is that we should be consistent because we might look like we're not being consistent if we don't just ask that.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm I think that Amy's got a point. And it's it's really easy for us to just change a bylaw. But it would be convenient if we could get an approval upon that, just changing those circles to the street, tangent to the street. If that's the only issue, we can do that pretty quick.
Okay, just a brief explanation, Joe, for the for myself, more importantly, and in the board. You're going to take this transient circle and and head it on lot number 61. That's going to be shifted over towards Elm Street.
Yes, it's going to touch the the edge of the circle is going to touch the edge of Elm Street. That's correct.
Okay, and then the map 48 lot 6 would be touching that furnace at that intersection.
Well, yeah, I think it could either touch at the intersection or either furnace or element would still meet your bylaw.
Okay. Is is the board comfortable with that, making a decision contingent upon the bylaw, I mean, the plan being corrected? And then we can go into the office and sign off on this?
I would have no problem with that.
I wouldn't either.
Gordon, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we endorse the plan for an A and R. Let me see if I can get the numbers here. Booking page, book 44089, page 2A7, map 48 lot 6. The applicant's name is Janus and Stephen Hayward of 25 Furnace Street. And dividing the lot into two two lots, lot number 6-1. And is the other one just plain dash 6?
Yeah, yeah, it currently is lot 6 now on map 48. That's correct, yeah. The assessors wanted us to leave that as 6. Okay, so so it'll be dividing 6-1 off of lot 6.
I say I I have a motion on the floor. Does someone want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Mark's going to second it. Just for and and Mark, just before I take a, I'm going to take a roll call vote. I just want to just let the board know that these last couple of Form As, and we're going to discuss this further down on our agenda. I've asked the the engineers or the applicant, whoever brings it in, to bring these to the assessor's office to make sure that they've got map and lot numbers that are appropriate for the town or appropriate for the assessor's office. So that's the only comment I want to make. I have a motion and I have a second. Amy, do you mind removing the whatever the thing is on there?
Charlie has it up.
Oh, Charlie, can you? Okay, I got a motion and a second. I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. I just want to make make it clear that, or Joe, a new bylaw is going to be provided with us at some point next week. You can the secretary will, Joanne will let us know when that's in and then we'll go in and get it signed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night. Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Okay, next item on our agenda. I don't know if this will go away, is the Franklin Street solar array, the ASB. Julian, I I believe in the last set of emails, a chief or a leaf, I can't pronounce his name, is still working on correcting the ASB to to reflect the proper street address.
Yes, that was that was the last we heard.
Okay, so he had not turned it in. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the next one. The next item on our agenda is Autumn Lane. We we're keeping this on the agenda only because it it's an open item. We haven't heard anything from the developer. At this point, I don't know if the board is inclined to maybe send him a certified letter. I don't know. It seems to me they've done that in the past. Or do we want to just keep it on the agenda until the gentleman decides to do something? Anybody got any suggestions?
I think at this point, we're we're not hindered over there. The road's been finished. If he's looking for release of the last lot, then there's the next step is in his court.
Okay. It's an open item. I I don't know that it's been problematic. I haven't received personally any complaints. Do you want to leave it on the agenda? You want to take it off until we hear from him?
I'd suggest we take it off. I mean, this you know, until we hear from him that he wants to do something. We we've chased him for years, so it's like, you know.
I I don't have a problem with that and I don't know that we need me to particular vote for that.
I don't think.
Board wants to, we just assumed, Joanne, just take Autumn Lane off the off our agenda until he.
All right.
We'll probably take it off and he'll send us a letter next week.
Hopefully, hopefully you're correct. Okay, next item on our agenda is Pasture Lane. And what I would like the board to do with the members, Joanne numbered all of our pages.
Yep.
So after page number 78, I'd like to include a page number 79, and I apologize, but it took a lot of work to get this stuff drafted and I didn't get into her till this morning. And I kind of want to, what I'm looking for is to have the members kind of review it. It's what I come up with, which I which hopefully will resolve the issue on Pasture Lane. It's a little bit lengthy. I've had conversations with the the developer. I've had conversations with town council. Did an extensive review of our bylaws to see if the proposal as presented by the developer is a mechanism for us to get the road finished and to get the lot released. I not looking for anything tonight other than to have the board review this. And I'm going to be asking the board to get a quote from Amory Engineering on the remaining work that needs to be done as far as inspections. And he he did initially in 2018, he did a he did a an estimate, which I've included just the first three pages. I didn't include all the pitches. There's a little explanation in there that I believe Amory, and I will reach out to him once I get the authorization from the board. I believe that these numbers were based on prevailing wage. It's my understanding that the developer is going to do the work himself. He's in a position to put in some sort of a bond, which would have to be reviewed by council and approved by council. They can let us know which is the best mechanism to to ensure that the road would be completed. And then also, as part of that agreement, we would, we, the board, would have to take a vote on removing the covenant. We place something else in its place once we get our our eggs in a row here. And that would allow the building of the structure. But there would be no occupancy issued until the road is completed. So it's fairly lengthy. I don't know that everybody read the whole thing. If you got any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them now. But the only thing that I'm really looking for tonight is to send this back out to Amory and to get his numbers. So we're going to have a complete package.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yes, you can.
Okay, we we've sent it out to Amory. He sent us numbers.
Correct. Correct.
Every, every time we send something out to him, somebody's gotta pay for that.
The applicant's paying for it.
Okay, but it, 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 what? What is the goal here? Is it to bring it up to today's price? Um, I've spoken with the applicant too over there, and my, my question is, and I, I understand the goal is that they would like to get that lot released and build the house. I think we have a responsibility to the people that are on that subdivision. And they've come in before us numerous times, and we've dealt with the previous owner of the subdivision, who still is not off the hook for this whole thing, I might add. But I believe the goal should be to get this thing done as soon as we can. And I know he's offered to put up a bond so that they could get the house and all that. But I would not be, um, willing to vote for something like that, number one, until we saw that there's some work being done. Um, I don't, I think it's an injustice to the people that live on the road to try to accommodate releasing the lot so that they can build the house. The whole reason that that lot was held was so that the road would be finished. And it's been kicked down the road because right after they built the last house in there, we had, the economy dropped. Uh, the lot wasn't worth the money that it was gonna take to build the road out. Now the road is worth, I mean, the lot is worth more than what it costs to fix the road. I think we, we, we have to be strong enough to say to them, look, we, we might be willing to accommodate a bond for some of the work, but there hasn't been any motivation to show to the people down there that this is even gonna happen. The last thing we wanna do is to let them get going into it, and then we have to pull the bond to finish the work.
Okay, can, let me just respond to that, Gordon?
Sure.
It's, it's my understanding that we're not just going to release the lot without them performing some work on the road. And I think those are the details that need to be worked out, and I think that's why we need to have a hearing process. And we also need to have that developer come in and give us the, the schedule of what he wants to do. I, I agree a hundred percent. I would not wanna release any portion of that lot. Let him start digging some holes until some work is started on the road. I, I agree a hundred percent. I think we owe that responsibility to those folks on Pasture Lane. I think the starting point is, is that we need Amory to tell us what that number is going to be for him to review it. That's gonna be part of that proposal. Then I think during our hearing process that we can ask the developer and the neighbors for timeframes. Because again, I don't really wanna see a bond because with a bond, now we do have to go with prevailing wage. So I don't know that a performance bond, let me just read what he said, is the most adequate way. But I think I'd rather have some, the work started, uh, before they start digging a hole.
Well, Alan?
If I could.
Go ahead.
I, I'd just like to, to say, yeah, I don't see the benefit in us having Amory figure out the cost of the road because it's not on us, it's on them. They don't really need to know what the cost is because at this point, they're obligated to do it. I don't see that knowing how much it's gonna cost them to finish doesn't help us because we're not gonna take a bond for any percentage of that. They're gonna build the road first and then get the lot. I think we should stay firm on that. And I don't believe that an updated cost is of any value to us. It would only be a value to them.
Okay, Mark, just to comment on that, that, that's not the intent. The cost is irrelevant at this point.
I don't see that. How, how is, how is us spending someone else's money irrelevant?
The only thing that, that, that I would wanna know is that how much Amory is gonna charge to do the inspections on the road. That's all.
Okay, alright.
That's all I'm looking for. As far as the cost, we know, we have a price from two thousand sixteen that says a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, I don't think Amory should have to duplicate that.
No, I, I'm sorry. I thought that was the proposal.
No, my, 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 my hope is that the board will say, okay, we'll get a number from Amory as to what it's gonna cost for his inspections. To make sure the road is built according to whatever standards or if there's gonna be some relief. The issue, the biggest issue right now is, is one coat of pavement. So, we need, we need to make sure that, that that's gonna be sufficient. It's, it's an eighteen-year-old road. They've only been on there once or twice. There's a lot of factors involved with, 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 uh, trucks going in or it's not a connecting road. So, uh, I, I think the biggest concern is, or with, with what I'm asking the board is that, uh, we get a number from Amory that says it's gonna be five thousand dollars, and he would provide us with inspections on fixing. I mean, there's a whole page of items that need to be fixed and adjusted, and Amory would have to tell us it's gonna be X amount of dollars to do all these inspections and then also to inspect it when it's finished. It's gonna be up to the board to decide how and when the, the project would be started versus releasing the lot. I, I'm in agreement that, that the lot probably should not be released, and so we get some effort from the developer to, um, fix some of the stuff. I mean, there's things that can be fixed, uh, prior to them paving the road.
Alan?
Yes, sir.
Um, the, the cost of Amory to do the inspections is borne on the developer. I mean, we don't, we don't need to ask him how much it's gonna be. It's ever how many inspections they require us is gonna be based on the way they do the work. So if they, if they call him out there, they, they wanna do something on the base coat, they're gonna have to call him out there. He's gonna have to make that call out there. We set up the inspections, but it, it, the, the cost of the inspection is borne on them.
Right, that's part of the, the original, uh, uh, this proposal, and I asked for clarification. The cost for the peer review and inspections will be, and the asphalt plans will be borne on the developer. It's, it's my understanding that in order for us, the, the way our regulations are for the planning board, that the board needs to, to take a vote on whether Amory is going to be that guy. That's the way I understand it, and that's in.
Well, we are, we already took that vote. He is the guy. He's been on there. Um, he took over from the last one, so.
Okay.
He is the, he is the inspecting agent for us. And, and we, we hired him before, and he came in and he gave us what, what he felt needed to be done there. So, the point is, at this point, we have a new developer taking over. We have a list of the items that he wants to do. Now, we send that to Amory and say, what inspections do you wanna make on this? Because it's not like a brand-new road where you would go in and you'd inspect the whole base coat. If they're gonna chop up part of the base coat, he's gonna need to be there. If they're gonna do something else, he's gonna need to be there. So we need to get just a list of what he wants for inspections for us, for, to protect us. And then, I, I think the, the biggest thing on Pasture Lane, and, and me talking with, uh, John Paquette, is that the plan required three ba, three layers of asphalt, of which we haven't required on any of the other subdivisions around town. They've been two coats. So, to, to go to the two coats, we just need the engineer to say, is what's there adequate? Or is it not adequate? Because if they only put down, we'll say, say it was supposed to be two inches of base coat, and they put down an inch and a half, then, then they need more base. So he's gotta make that judgment call. What did they put down? What's required? Can, can they get away with a thicker top coat? We need a little direction from him. But I, I know by talking with the, um, the new developer, he wa, he would like to do two coats, putting down a base coat where he's gonna take it up, and then putting a finish coat on top. So I think we need the direction from the engineer on that.
Okay, uh, and, and I, and I agree. And I, I wasn't aware of the vote that, uh, gave Amory permission to do that. So if that's the case, and that votes in the record, then I will reach out to Amory and ask him all these particular questions. But I do wanna point out that I spent some time on the, the subdivision plan in the original approved plan, and you could very well be right. There might be, uh, subdivisions in town that have the two coats.
Typically, we did two coats. I know the regulation had said three coats, but we had, we had approved two coats where they went with a thicker base coat and a thicker top coat.
Okay, in, in looking at, to keep everything on the straight and narrow, my research was that because that plan showed three, then in order for, for us to waive that requirement, and if you go through what, what I, what I drafted, we need to go through those steps. So, at this.
I, 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 I agree. We, we need to, we need to make some steps. If that, if that's the case, it's going to be changed, then we need to take the steps to make the change. But what I'm saying is, we also need the engineer to give us his, uh, expertise as to what was put down for the base on the original. We don't have the original engineer that did the site inspections there anymore. So Amory's coming in on this now. So he has to kinda do some exploratory and find out what was there.
Okay, wha, what I would do too is, uh, i- if, if, if we don't need to vote, then, then that's fine. I can reach out to Amory with a list. My, my only concern is that, um, we are not paying Amory, so. He is, so, um, I will ask him for that, but I'm gonna kind of ask him for kind of a scope of work so that when he goes out there, when he starts this project, he's gonna get paid. He has to get paid. I mean, in order to do, um, I, I don't know that he's gonna charge for an estimate or not, I, I, I'm not, not really sure. But he should provide us with a scope of work based on the inspections to perform and the list of inspections and so forth and so on. I will reach out to him as long as the board's in concurrence and have him put that together with an estimate. But I think that we should hold a hearing, and if that's the case, we're gonna know what, uh, Amory's gonna want. And then, um, if this project is gonna move forward, then the developer automatically will submit to us those funds to pay Amory. But.
But that's on the revolving account, Alan.
Pardon me?
That's in the revolving account. So as we pay Amory, the money goes down in the revolving account.
But do we have any?
Well, yeah, there should be money in the revolving account for that.
Uh, Joanne? We, I got a list of revolving account funds a while ago. Um, I, I don't know that there is. Well, you know what? We've got a, we've got some good points, so. I'll reach out to Amory.
It may be under Farm View, or it might be under Pasture Lane.
Okay, I'll have her check that.
Yeah, I'll check, yeah, I'll check that.
Okay.
Because he got, he got paid for the last, um, review that he did that came in in eighteen or nineteen.
Okay, so.
You know, so the developer's been paying it, so, I mean.
I wouldn't expect it to be null, like, there may be a small amount, but it should be one open.
Okay, right. So why don't, so i- if, if the board so concurs, um, we'll, we'll schedule a he, a hearing so that, um, the developer can make his presentation. We'll have Amory on board. Uh, we'll get an idea as to what Amory's gonna want based on Gordon, your recommendations on inspections and list of inspections. And then my thoughts are, at that point, we'd have to, um, make a decision on whether or not we're gonna allow two coats or three coats.
Well, I, I think the first thing to do would be to reach out to Amory, because he's been out there.
Again, exactly, that's what I wanna do.
Okay, and, and he's, and he's had conversation with the developer. So just ask if it makes sense to fix the base coat and do one coat on top. I mean, just have that conversation and see if he feels that what's there is adequate or not. That'll give us a direction before we even do the hearing.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Just to give us a thought of whether he thinks what's there is, is adequate or not.
Okay, now, what I'll have to do though is to make sure that there's something in the revolving account. If he, I'm sure he's gonna wanna charge for that. Um, well, I'll, I'll work that out with Joanne, and we'll see, and then I'll, I'll reach out.
And, and Paquette is now the owner of, I believe it's Paquette, right? I'm not sure the company, whatever, but you just reach out to them and you say, look, we, we need another twenty-five-hundred dollars in the revolving account.
I, I don't have a problem with that, but I was under the impression that when we're asking, uh, developers for money, that that's gotta come directly from a vote of the board.
No, the revolving account is open. It's been open on that, that project over there. So, we've assumed that, uh, you know, technically, maybe that money isn't his. Maybe it's the past developer. But the past developer's the one that's still on the hook for this whole thing.
Okay.
He sold it. It doesn't mean it took him out of the picture.
Okay, so, so I, I got a course of action. Uh, any other members there to comment at this point?
Alan, I was just gonna, do you want me to tell you how much is in the account?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, it's a hundred and fifty-eight dollars in there.
Okay, all right. I, I'm still gonna follow Gordon's, uh, advice. Uh, well, reach out to Amory. Try to get something together. Um, I, I don't know these are gonna go out there and look without being paid. I, I'll discuss what we're doing, um, or what we're trying to do. In, in the event, in the event that, um, Amory wants to do that, I could in fact reach out to John Paquette and say, look, it, we're going to need X amount of dollars in that revolving account. What I don't wanna do, because I'm under the impression that I should come to the board to, to get permission to do that. If that's okay, then, then I will coordinate that if that's, if that's what Amory wants. I'll try to coordinate that with, with Mr. Paquette, the applicant, uh, to try to get it expedited. Is the board. Yeah.
At this point, we just turn to Paquette and say, we need two thousand dollars in the revolving account.
But you, I know that.
Right now. Just reach out to him and tell him, you know, we need two thousand dollars put into the revolving account.
Okay, I'm under the impression that it requires a vote to do that. If, if, if I'm under the wrong impression, I don't have a problem. I'll, I'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah, no, we, we don't need a motion to do that. I mean, this revolving account, that's how it's set up. When it needs to be put in there, I mean, he's asking.
It's really for the convenience of the applicant.
Yeah, okay, so Mark, you in agreement that, that we don't need a vote?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Uh, Rick, uh, Amy?
I think it's great that we're discussing it. Um, I would probably think that on top of that, we should get a hearing going so that maybe we can make a proper decision on what's gonna happen here so that the, hopefully, future residents and the current residents can be done with this situation.
Yes, I agree. Uh, Rick, any comments?
No, just love to see this get, get done.
Joanne, um, our agenda for the next meeting, uh, we do have a public hearing, and then we're gonna have that other Form A. Is there anything else pressing? Can we schedule this for April first?
Yeah, um, the hearing is at seven-thirty.
Okay.
So we have seven forty-five, so.
And that's, that's just on the, um.
It's just on the, on the floodplain by.
Flood, floodplain.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we, we have pretty much nothing else. That's.
So we don't really expect that that's gonna run very long for the floodplain.
Why, why don't we do a seven forty-five? Um, I, I would like the members to kind of take a look at the, um, that floodplain bylaw. I saw something as a little unusual, but it might not have been, and, and I wanna get on that subject now. So, all right.
I, I have a little bit of a reminder on the scheduling that we already have. Are, are we gonna have, um, Cover Street come back, come back?
Cover Street is coming back, uh.
So.
They'll be on at seven oh five.
We'll put them on at seven oh five.
I just wanted to make sure our scheduling was.
We can handle some of the, uh, smaller stuff. The other hearing's already been advertised, so we can't change that. We can get some peripheral stuff done, uh, go onto our floodplain hearing, and then, um, we'll schedule seven forty-five. Um, and Joanne, I wanna make sure that when we do the agenda, that the agenda reflects that we're gonna hold a hearing, uh, on Farm View Estates, Pasture Lanes. And I'll give you a little more verbiage as far as, uh, the waivers that we're gonna be discussing.
Okay, if, if, if you're gonna do it. If 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 you're gonna do a hearing, then then the applicant has gotta apply for that.
Yeah. And they're, right, and and they're.
I I I I don't know that I agree with a hundred percent, Gordon, because I know that the the if this was a regular subdivision. And under our regulations and under these regulations, from what I've read, anybody can request it. So if you feel more comfortable, I will ask, we're we're gonna schedule it now, I'll ask Mr. Paquette. But if you look under.
Well, I mean, if you if you're gonna have a hearing, then you gotta notify the abuddars.
No, let me see. Well, I mean, we, if you, you need to take a minute and look at, uh, let me see.
Well, well, wait a minute, because a hearing would make it so that, first of all, it would have to be advertised. And are we the planning board paying for that advertisement or is the applicant?
No, we do not have to have a a a public hearing notify notifying all the abuddars. Unless those abuddars, okay, or any of their mortgage rights were were to be affected. So, Mike, when I, the mortgage rights?
Yes, because the street directly affects everybody on there. Everybody's, everybody's value is down in there because their street is not accepted by the town, Alan. This is, this is so, this is very heavy on the on the residents of Pasture Lane. This is, this is.
Okay, if you look under section two, our section bylaws, two thirty-five, forty-five, the modification amendment rescission. Which is in the packet that I gave you. That that tells us what we need to do and that tells us that, that it tells me the way interpreted, that we we should hold a hearing. Uh, I don't believe it needs to be an advertised hearing or public hearing with a butter notification. Uh, I would act, reach out to Charlie to put it on our website. I would ask, I'm not, I haven't been in contact with other than one person in the subdivision to make sure that they're aware, so we do have some input. But on this modification. I don't see where we need to have a public hearing with a butter notification. Because when our work or the, our goal or 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 the work that we're gonna do is not gonna affect, it's not gonna change anybody's property lines through the subdivision. Only difference in the subdivision, and maybe I'm being a little too critical, is when I look at the profile. It says three coats. All we're gonna ask, or all we're gonna be asking the board, if the review engineer is in agreement. Is to waive that additional code. So, under the two thirty-five, we can hold a hearing, not necessarily a public hearing. And we can either modify, amend, do nothing. That's, that's the way I've read the bylaw, so. Folks can do is kind of look through it and see, maybe I missed something.
Alan, what what other kind of hearing is there than a public hearing?
Well, you can have a public hearing, but there's a difference between a butter notification. We're not doing, um, we're not doing any modifications, we're doing a small modification on a, on the subdivision. But I.
By, just to clarify, if this is just a hearing, we're just putting it on the agenda to discuss it with the engineer and the owner?
Yes.
If you do a subdivision and it comes under two thirty-five, it says hearing, then you notify the public.
Well, yeah, I anticipate notifying the public.
Now you're changing the 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 subdivision and you're saying you don't need to notify the abuddars. I mean, the the abuddars were notified when the subdivision came in, they need to be notified if there's gonna be a change.
The abuddars, if you had vacant land, who would the abuddars will notify during the subdivision?
Who are the owners of the land?
Okay, well, I mean, if you can establish, if if you can review the bylaws and you come up with something that says that we need to have a public hearing with a butter notification.
No, I'm not going to.
I don't, I don't have.
I already, I already told you what I feel, that's it. I mean, if you if you disagree and the rest of the board agrees with you, that's fine.
Okay.
I just, I just said my piece, that's all.
Okay, um, so I'm kind of looking at, we've we've addressed one issue as far as, um, the Amory. Uh, the next question that I have of the board is, um, do you wanna hold a hearing on, uh, April first at seven forty-five? Based on my letter of March sixteenth. Based on the fact that we're gonna be looking at a modification in that subdivision.
Do we have, um, enough time to advertise before April first?
No, we don't, you know, it wouldn't be enough time, it would have to be April fifteenth if we advertise.
The only problem is, is that, um, I I don't see where we have to advertise, I know it's important for the abuddar's notification. I I I'm just going by what the statute says, but I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
I think we really have to clarify, because is this the applicant asking to have a hearing for a change? Or is this us hosting a meeting about a change? Two differences.
I agree, the applicant, the applicant in his letter.
Yeah.
Would be requesting it.
Yeah, so the second that he is asking for a change, he needs to follow the rules. He's gotta notify all the abuddars and then we have to have a formal public hearing for the change in the subdivision.
Agreed.
Okay.
I I don't think there's any other way around that.
Okay, so, what I'm going to do. I'm gonna request.
I would suggest that you suggest to him to request a hearing for those changes and file for a public hearing.
Mark, do you know which section that we need to hold this public hearing? Because we we got hearings and we got public hearings. If you can just share that in the meantime, and I'm gonna put a request in for a hearing. But I'm gonna make it that it's gonna be a hearing that the board feels that noter about a butter notification should be required. I'm gonna leave it like that, I, because I'm I'm kind of picky on, if the statute says that we should do that, we should do that, so I'll I'll do that. Good.
Well, no, you, we shouldn't, in in that case, then as a board, we shouldn't notify him at all. If he has a request from us, he can bring it to us.
No, the board's not gonna notify him, what, you want me to ask him to notify the abuddars?
No, my suggestion to you was to suggest to him to request a public hearing and he notifies the abuddars. And puts in there what his request is for those changes. Not us to request those changes.
Amen.
That's fine, I'm 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 fine with that, everybody else okay with that?
Yes.
Certainly.
Okay, do we want to um, attempt to schedule this, uh, the fifteenth of April?
No, I think that what we just decided was that Mr. Paquette would request a hearing and put in writing what his hearing will be about so that it can be then advertised in the paper and the abuddars can be notified. Which we do not have enough time for April first. And we would be going to the next meeting, I think that's what we all just decided.
And and when he requests that, then the date could be given as to when that would be available. And Joanne could let him know that it could be April fifteenth.
Okay.
But if he doesn't request it in time to have it advertised, then, you know, it's 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 count, it's pointless for us to schedule something if he's not gonna ask for it.
All right. I'm okay with that, uh, Amy, I think what you need to do is if you can provide me. I I wanna make sure that we we meet the statutory requirement. And if you saw something in the statute that says we need to do that, I'm gonna ask him to do that anyways. One of the issues though is that if there is a public hearing request and it's set up, I believe that public hearing request would have to reflect the comments that I made in this letter, which I know the board hasn't had a chance to look at it, but I think that the request, if he's going to make it, would be to, under section two thirty-five dash forty-five. Which would be a modification, amendment, or the rescission, uh, and that whole section.
I think that's up to him.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so let me make sure I got this, um, I I'm gonna reach out to the the applicant. And Amory, uh, Joanne, you you're keeping notes, right? Because I'm scratching, okay, I'll reach out to Joanne and make sure that we get it all together. Okay.
And Amory has been out there and and met with Paquette out there.
Okay, okay, well, I I think we're making a little progress. So I'll I'll, um, follow it up, I'm gonna get more of the notes from Joanne, I scratched a few things down. But I just wanna make sure that his request is gonna reflect all the comments that the board made. Any any other discussion on this? And it is on the agenda, I I don't know that, uh, there's any, um, abuddars that have any particular questions, I'm not gonna get into schematics, but if there's a in a butter that has some sort of an objection to a public hearing or has some concerns, please, you can be heard, just recognize yourself through the host. Seeing none, we'll move on. All right, uh, complete streets program project list, uh, I have not, and I don't believe, Joanne. We haven't got anything back from the selectmen on that, have we?
No.
All right, so I think the selectmen are working with, uh, the highway department on that. Okay, next item.
On what, sorry, what was that about? Oh, complete streets, sorry.
Streets, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, I have a question on complete streets. Um, I asked to see if we needed to get all of those, um, projects engineered in order to qualify, and I believe that's what I've heard in other meetings, but at a a previous meeting, I can look where my notes are, I I have that that we were gonna get from Steve Hayward.
Okay, uh, you you've you've asked it a couple of times, I don't have an answer, so my suggestion, Amy, would be to uh, reach out to Joanne with your questions, go through her, let her forward her on to whether it be the selectman's office or Rick, try to get you the answers. I I I don't have the answers, and I know you've asked a a a bunch of times. I I don't have them unless one of the other members does.
I'll get it.
Are you okay with that? You can just reach out.
Because my my recollection is, is that they did have to be engineered, but I don't wanna.
Well, you.
On that, you know what I mean, I might be wrong, but that's, that's what I remembered.
You could, you're correct, Mark, but I think Amy's question has been, is the engineering coming out of chapter ninety funds? Is is it my correct, Amy?
My my question was, what, uh, do they all have to get paid, um, engineered, which is the town's payment of that? Whether or not it's chapter ninety money or not is not the specific question. However, it would be who the town to know if we're spending two to three hundred thousand dollars on engineering to maybe get a four hundred thousand dollar grant.
All right, I will, I will answer that, because like, yes, like, um, that's why I think we should be really picky. So if we do have issues, make sure that we really want to see them through. Because it is gonna be at a cost, we're going to have to pay for the engineering. So it should be something that we're interested in doing, whether we have the grant or not. Because it should only be that important that we're willing to invest originally. That's my opinion, but yes, we will have to pay that and we should be careful on what we pick.
Yeah, my understanding is that we have to engineer all fifteen of those in order to apply for the grant, which is what my problem is with it. It's because we're gonna spend two hundred, two to three hundred thousand dollars on engineering to get fifteen um, projects engineered, which some of them don't seem that necessary. And, um, spend that money only to get about four hundred and that's a gamble. Because it's not.
I think it's definitely something to to look into.
I don't understand, I don't, I I don't, um, agree with what you're saying, I believe that the way it would as is we had to submit fifteen projects, why they come up with fifteen, and then those projects were gonna be broken down. And I'm not sure who was gonna make that final decision to, I believe, three or four projects. And it's a good question, would those three or four projects have to be engineered? I'm gonna say yes, but I don't believe, at least listening from to, uh, the presentations that they made and speaking with the highway department, that we're gonna engineer fifteen projects, because they, we've got a wish list. He's got priorities, uh, and we make the recommendations. Somebody else comes up with the priorities and we follow it through, but I I don't believe, I've never heard of anything that that says that we're gonna have to engineer fifteen projects.
That's the way it was, um, that's the way it was stated.
Yeah, that part is unclear as far as I'm concerned, on whether or not, but the engineering work that does have to be done will be paid for by the town.
So so Amy, you know what you want? My suggestion would be draft something, get it off to Joanne and she can send it to, um.
I'll go see Steve.
Both the, um, the selectmen and the, um, and the highway surveyor. Okay, peer review procedure. Um, I put this on the agenda only because, uh, in in discussions with Joanne, and and this came up with the Bud's Good. We had, uh, we had discussed the peer review with Bud's Goods and then, um, Gordon had suggested that we, um, we go out and get a second bid to review Bud's Goods. And then we got to a point where, by the time we got the second bid, our hearing was scheduled and we didn't have a meeting prior. And Joanne's under the im- impression, um, and and you older members can clarify this, that the peer reviews are determined, or whoever's gonna do that per- peer review is determined by a vote of the board. Is that the way you understand it, Gordon?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that's what we wanted to clarify, so.
Yeah, so at the beginning of the project, um, one would be appointed during the meeting.
Okay, so.
But typically, what we did was, we would have, at the beginning of the year, at some point in the year, we would send out and get some bids in. And so then we would have a list of three or four. Uh, depend upon the year, we might only have a couple, but, you know, we get some peer reviewed engineers on our list, so that if something comes in, one of those may be presenting a a project in the town and we can't use them, so we would have somebody as a backup to to take a look at their project. But typically, we like to get engineers that aren't presenting stuff in the town. But sometimes, you know, as it works, they get a client in that town. You can't expect them not to take on the work because they do peer review too.
Where did, where'd you get the list from?
Well, we we had contacted just different engineers in the area, I mean, we used to have Merrill on the list, we had Amory, we had PMP on there, we had, um, uh, land planning on there, um, you know, we've had Silver on there. You know, just different engineers in the area. I mean, at one time, Silver wasn't really doing any work in town, but he was doing peer review for us. Uh, land planning, that kind of ran into a conflict because they sometimes were bidding on the same jobs that they were end, ended up reviewing, so that didn't work out. But but to have a few different engineering firms that'll do the peer review is what we, what we strive for.
Okay, so would you suggest that we, um, if we've got some advertising money in the budget, and I had no idea what the budget is to do an RFP? Uh, we, we.
We don't have.
Do an RFP to see who is interested. I mean, I took it upon myself to have Joanne get a, an additional quote from Merrill uh, on the, um, that marijuana facility, because when we had talked about Amory, you said, hey, let's go out and get another bid. But I didn't know anybody else, I do know, I know Merrill, so Merrill did, in fact, submit us a quote. Uh, but the day he submitted those, a quote, a few hours later, they withdrew. So is the board's, uh.
And we, and we do, so, we've used Merrill before too, I mean, you know, it it, the the idea is, is um, we didn't do it last year, um, but we need to just contact some of these guys. Especially the ones that have already done it for us and see if they're interested. And if they would send us, you know, a list of what their fees are for doing a site plan. And typically, they'll give us, you know, the engineer's fee, somebody else's fee that's in the office that does stuff for them, or, you know, they'll give us a breakdown of some of that, and then we have those to choose from.
Well, if you've got a list of engineers, we'll use it, I I think, and the only other thing we can do is do, do an RFP. Because I, you see, you mentioned PMP, I know PMP has been sold.
Yeah.
I don't know that they're doing it, that Silver's doing a lot of work in town, uh, so I don't, would suggest that he do it, um. Land planning, uh, has done some work in town. I guess the fair way would be if we've got some money in our budget, or if we can use the Mass Municipal, just put on an RFP for consulting services, and and let's see who responds. But I think we'd have to do that in Mass Municipal. I don't think we can put that in the Halifax Express.
I mean, I think we could just reach out to those engineers we've used before and ask them if they've got an interest.
Do you have a list of those?
Yeah, there's Merrill.
Yes.
Amory.
Yeah.
Silva. There's Collins.
I don't believe Collins does much review, but I mean, we can ask him. Okay, what else?
I don't know if anybody else has got a suggestion. Like you said, I mean, PMP has gone, got sold out, so, you know, they're not there.
Joanne, did you get those names?
I don't know if land planning's doing much.
I did get the list you gave me, yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll try to get something together and get something out for them.
Is land planning still doing stuff?
Land planning is. I haven't seen any of their plans lately on the septic end, but I know I've spoken to them over there on some issues, and they're around, and we will do a request from them.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to just ask.
Okay. All right, so we've got a good direction there. The next item on our agenda is going to be the Form A process. As I mentioned during the the last presentation, the last two Form As that came in, I asked that they go to the assessor's office to verify that the lot numbers were okay. And in both particular cases, they were not, so the plans were changed accordingly. And I know in the past, we've had some issues. I don't know that in our Form A checklist, that we can add that. I can maybe look at it now. Or what's the board's suggestion there? Do we just want to send them to the assessor's office? Or we want to add another item on there that says that they've, the plan's been reviewed by the assessors, and it has the appropriate lot numbers?
I think we could just send them to the assessor's office with it.
Anybody else got any concerns?
Doesn't, like, when we get a plan of any kind, doesn't it go out to all the boards for comment?
Only some plans do.
Not the A and Rs.
I think if you make it, when you make a decision on an A and R, it might go to the different boards, but this is the initial process. I was initially on the impression that they dropped them off at the town clerk's office, but I've been corrected that the plan goes to the planning board, and then it's disseminated from there, but we've had.
They can submit it to the town clerk, too.
You can submit it to the town clerk?
You can, yeah. I mean, anybody can submit what they want to the town clerk. It gets stamped the date that you give it to the town clerk.
I was always, always I was under the impression that you submitted it to the town clerk, it'd be date stamped and time for your 21-day or 45-day period. We can look into that, but nobody has an objection at this point that we send them off to the town clerk first. And they're going to reach out to Joanne with the submission, and I think Joanne can say, look at, just make sure you go to the town, excuse me, go to the assessor's office to make sure your lot numbers are correct.
Yep, and I stand corrected. I said I thought it was 14 days for the A and R. It's not, it's 21.
21, okay. That did come on the chat. I saw something about 21, and that's why I thought they had to be submitted to the town clerk, because your bell tolls from the time you had that submission, but I could be wrong.
Well, it does toll there, but, you know, it also reflects on when the planning board meets, so. It's kind of, it's kind of a gray area, but the idea is that when we get an A and R in, it's not something that you kick down the road, because an A and R comes in, and basically, you pretty much have to sign everyone that comes in. It doesn't necessarily mean that when we sign it, that they have a buildable lot.
Correct.
All right, so Joanne, kind of from now on, would just, if we remember, just have the engineers or whoever the applicant is check with the assessor's office.
Right, yes, that's where they'd go first.
Okay, good. Meeting minutes. Let me see, pages. Oh, it's like down here. Our first meeting minutes begins on January 21st. And what page are we? Going through all the emails for us.
It's 42 to 46.
Okay, why don't we do January 21st? I just want to remind the board that we've got 30 days of three meetings under the county general's regulations to approve them. There was, I think, Amy, you had asked that they be held the last time. So are there any comments, questions, additions, deletions to the January 21st, 21 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 21st, 2021 meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a a motion and a second. I'm going to go to a roll call. Gordon?
Yes.
Now, excuse me, let me see, Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Mark?
I was not pressing, I will abstain.
Alan, yes. So, Joanne, we have a 4-0-1 vote. Mark abstained. Next item on our agenda is going to be our February 4th meeting minutes. I thought they were pretty much cut and dry. It might have been one little error or something that we made. I don't remember. I know I pointed something on one of these to Joanne, and she made the immediate correction. Anybody got any questions, concerns, additions, deletions for the February 4th meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 4th meeting minutes.
Second.
I'm going to go to a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Joanne, that's a 5-0. Next item on the agenda is the February 18th meeting minutes. Anybody got any comments, questions, additions, or deletions?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 18th, 2021 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to go to a roll call, which is going to be Gordon.
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Joanne, that's a 5-0.
Thank you for the screen.
February 18th. Next item is page 56. Something's, something made a noise. Is somebody chatting something?
I don't know.
On page 56 through 60? 60 is a 60, yeah, through 60.
I have discussion on this one.
Okay. You can, we can do one of two things. We can we can go to a vote and hold you for discussion, or is it something major you want to talk about first, Amy?
On page 59. Starts on 58, letter from Joanne Tochio and Morgan.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, let us, I'm trying to find.
Yeah, I just finished describing.
58?
And 59.
Okay.
In that section, I have, I have a lot of addition, and I didn't have a chance to add it, so I will, or else Joanne can. I need to, the minutes to be looked at between the hour and 3 minutes 9 seconds to the hour and 6 minutes and 43 seconds, and for it to be properly typed out, I'll be willing to do that before the next meeting, but I didn't see the minutes in our emails because we had so many, except for in the packet until later on tonight, so I didn't have a chance to type them in.
Okay, just so that we're clear, on page 58, where are you starting?
I'm saying that the section that I'm talking about starts on page 58. And it will
Just where's the start?
Go on.
Tochio and Morgan?
Yep.
All right, let me just make a suggestion. We'll hold this meeting, we'll hold this minutes. If you could, but you got to give Joanne plenty of time, give her at least a week. I think you redline them, maybe I got the wrong term. You're going to put your amendments in?
Or she can. I said that the hour, one hour, 3 minutes and 9 seconds to the one hour, 6 minutes and 43 seconds needs to be reiterated correctly with exactly what happened there. It is actually very decipherable, and it would need to be reflected correctly, because as it stands now, does not reflect what actually occurred during that meeting.
Okay, I don't know what, I don't know, I don't know what was discussed, but Joanne has provided us with these minutes, so my suggestion would be to
Did I make the motion?
Could we redline it or something?
I mean, that's my version. I mean, if she wants to write another version, and if you want to vote on each, that's up to you, but that
We don't have to vote on each. That's only a confusion thing. I have the right as a board member to update the minutes. You can write them, and it's, that's your right, that's fine, but I have the right as a board member to add things to make it
Do you think they're inaccurate?
From our point of view, as we are the members of the board.
Right, right, but I mean, that's, that's my version, so I mean, if you don't think they're accurate. Does anybody else think they're inaccurate?
Joanne, it's not anything you should take offense to, so it's just, it's just the fact that I'm a board member who wants to add certain things about our minutes to our minutes.
Okay.
Does anybody else feel that way? I mean, I'm, I mean, those are accurate to me, I
I find they're inaccurate. If you watch, and I can actually play it for us right now if you want to.
Just hold on, folks. Amy, what we've done in the past, where you've had additions or corrections or deletions to be added, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne, you send
I will do it. I have no problem.
Okay, so you're going to send her what your interpretation of that tape was, or your interpretation of the
Yeah, direct quotes from people.
Okay, and then Joanne?
We will vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay, so Joanne, then, then, then we would probably have the second set of meeting minutes, but wait a minute. That's the only part of this meeting you have a problem with?
Yep.
Okay, so then I'm trying to figure out the simplest approach, instead of having two sets of meeting minutes.
I don't think the meeting minutes, if, it seems to have worked in the past. Joanne does the meeting minutes. If Amy feels like she would like to add things, as long as she's cool with taking on herself to add a second set, then we can vote on whichever one that we feel is great.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't think, yeah, as long as everyone else is cool with that, I think it has worked in the past.
Amy, you're going to provide the only thing, Mark, is she doesn't, she's not contesting the first portion, so I wouldn't expect Amy to do, unless, Joanne, you think she should do, because the only section is the correspondence, so my only thoughts are
It's not the correspondence.
Wait a minute, let me finish. Does Amy provide us with all three pages of the meeting minutes?
Yes, I think there should be two separate things, so then we can easily just say where, which one we're voting on. And that way, Joanne doesn't have to create two, and then if there are specific things that Amy would like added, then that way, like I said, as long as she's cool with taking on herself to come up with them, so Joanne doesn't have to do it twice, I'm cool with just voting on whichever one.
Okay, so Mark, so we would just be voting on the correspond, so Amy, you're just going to be providing us something for this correspondence?
Oh, we make it easy. I will update these minutes, and we'll push these to the next meeting. Motion to push the March 4th, 2021 meeting minutes to the April 1st, 2021 meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'm going to, I'm going to, hold on, hold on, Mark, before we, I just want to clarify. Does Amy have to do all the minute meetings, or just the correspondence?
I have the word document that I can actually add to, and it isn't the correspondence. It is part of the zero mon ponset, Grujin, Tochio portion. It is not correspondence.
And for clarification, though, Amy, if you can, just produce the entire things like you have in the past, that way we can read each one on its merit, and then we're allowed to vote for that, and I think it's fine. And I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, that's what I plan on doing, Mark. Thank you. That's what I plan on doing. I just couldn't find them until late tonight, and I didn't have a time to type it in before the meeting.
Yeah.
Someone made a motion. I don't recall. Gordon? Motion to continue. Somebody made a motion.
I did. I made a motion to take the March 4th, 2021 meeting minutes and push them to the April 1st, 2021 meeting.
Okay, Gordon seconded. I'm going to go to a roll call. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. So it's 5-0. We're going to continue that. Joanne, I'm still not clear if she's going to produce all the minute minutes, but Amy, when can you, when will you have those minutes available for us to look at? Please don't do it the day of the meeting. Can we get a timeframe from you? You'll have them in like Friday?
I'll have them in as soon as I can.
Okay, so at least by the Friday before. Not enough time for you, Joanne? Yeah, I guess it would be, Friday before our next meeting.
Joanne doesn't really have anything to do with it after that.
Well, she's got to disseminate them.
No, she does not. She is not a board member. It just goes to us.
It's just an email.
Yeah, right.
But he's saying she has to disseminate them.
No, no, he's saying, send them out.
Yep.
They're going to be sent out, so they're going to be sent out through the, through Joanne.
Well, disseminate doesn't mean send out. Does it?
Yes.
Am I wrong?
Yeah.
Disseminate?
And this term, he's just saying, yeah, she's just going to pass them along.
Yeah, disseminate, that's, okay. All right. Correspondence, we have a letter from the Board of Health on Clid's Tree. We have a letter from John Parkett, and then we have the notices from budding towns, public hearing notices. I read all of those in board, any members of the board got any questions on any correspondence?
No, not at this time.
Okay. In other business, just, I'll ask kind of last cut of, last orders of business. We do have the zoning.
I do have one thing on minutes. For instance, there was the January 7th minutes, we have to ask town council, I believe, what we were going to do about the fact that we had no approved minutes. And there was minutes on the planning board table to be signed from the January 7th, 2021 meeting, and they shouldn't be on the table to be signed as none, neither addition were approved. And none of them should be sent to the town clerk, unless we have town council giving us the guidance on what happens in that condition, so stamp shouldn't be used on those because that is not what the idea was after we approved, I mean, didn't approve those January 7th, 2021 meetings. That's not okay.
I do have something to offer on that. Normally, I would not vote on on the minutes for, if I wasn't there. In this case, I'd be willing to go over with a fine-tooth comb, watch the video, and cast a vote, which normally, like I said, I don't do on meetings I don't attend. But I think in this particular case, where it would help and be helpful to the board, if no one else has a problem with me voting on minutes that I was not there for, I would be willing to take the time, make sure that I got it right, and look over them. And would be prepared next meeting to vote on them, as long as everyone else is okay with that, and then we can resolve that issue.
Mark, I just, that's why I called you this week. I thought, and I'm going to tread lightly, because January 7th meeting minutes aren't on the agenda, okay? We'll put them on, if we get a motion to put them on, and if you want to make a motion, we'll discuss it there, but we don't have, there's nothing on our agenda for January 7th, so if you want to make a motion, Amy, to put it on, we'll put it on our next agenda, and we'll go over this, and we can Uh, and we'll go over this and, uh, we can, uh,
That'd be fine. I'll be prepared to make a motion at that point. Um, I would like to get a feeling from the board.
Do you want to put them on the January 7th, uh, our next?
I was trying to hear what Mark was saying. Mark, sorry?
Yeah. I'd just like to get a feeling for the board as far as voting on minutes that you did not attend, but we are in agreement that that's not an issue, correct? Given time to review the video, which would be greater than the, just the minutes alone.
Sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Because those were a true to tie, they're both on the, um, the website as a draft. They're both, they're both a draft.
That's not how it's supposed to be though.
That's how I was directed to try to do it.
Joanne, Joanne, Amy?
Who told you to do that?
Joanne, Amy, okay. We're, we're, we're discussing an item that's not on the agenda. All right.
Um, actually it is on the agenda under any other unscheduled business following posting of this agenda and,
Wanted to put me on notice. I, I, I don't have a problem, but I'm not going to deal with an open, another open meeting complaint because I know that it's not on the agenda. And I don't have a problem with the conversation that we're having, but I think we need to put it on our next agenda. And we can discuss whatever you want to discuss. I, I'm, I'm in full agreement.
We might as well finish it now.
But let's cut the debate on it because we got an agenda to follow. And on an open meeting law, if Amy had said, look, I want to put that on, if she had called yesterday or sent Joanne something, I would have. So I,
Well, if it wasn't directly all about us.
Motion to put it on for January 7th?
Hold on, I have a question. Joanne? Joanne, you, you mentioned something. Can you please tell me who told you to put both of those on the, uh, website?
Joanne, we, we're not going to, we're not going to get any more discussion on,
She said something and I'm asking her a question to finish, to answer the question.
Not realizing that we don't have an agenda item. We're not going to put this, this board into another position with an open meeting law complaint.
Who's going to complain? Gordon?
I have no idea. I have no idea. Let's, let's either, I, I, I don't have a problem with you. If you want to put on a vote to put that on, fine. I'll entertain that. If not, let's just move on. You want to make a motion?
I, I don't think,
I want Joanne.
Uh, Gordon, do you want to make a motion to, to put our, whatever she says on for our next meeting?
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't, I don't think we need to have a motion to put it on. I mean, if, if we want, you know what I mean? If we want to put minutes on our next meeting, that's, it's just, you know, we have all the other minutes on there. So you just put the minutes on.
And like I said, that'll give me enough time to take a look at them.
Yeah. Next meeting. And we'll move on to the zoning bylaw floodplain. Um, we discussed that. We have a hearing on April 1st. It's going to be via Zoom unless, uh, the governor changes the orders, which I don't expect he will. Uh, our last order of business is going to be the, uh, comprehensive, uh, permit for the country club estates, which to my knowledge has been continued to May 19th, 2021. Having concluded all the business for our March 18th meeting, it being,
Alan, I think there was another letter that was sent in.
An email.
There's an email that came in.
I don't see anything on the agenda.
Um, your, your item wasn't on the agenda that came in today too. Uh, Joanne, was there another email that got sent out?
Pastor Lane? Of course Pastor Lane's been on the agenda. Pastor Lane's been on the agenda. Um, I have been extremely busy. My communication came in late and, uh, I, again, I apologize for that, but we put Pastor Lane on the agenda. So I, I don't know of any, anything else that came in.
Joanne, was there another correspondence that came in? Is Joanne there?
She's on mute.
Yeah, no, I'm here. Yes.
Yeah. Was there another correspondence?
Yes, I wasn't, I sent that out to everybody.
And it only came on the email, correct? It wasn't in the packet?
No, because I just got it today. The packets are made and sent, are in the office on Wednesday nights.
Right. But that, that came out to us today.
Well, nobody, I wasn't asked to put that on the agenda.
Can I ask to have it on the agenda?
So if it's something that came in late and is that something we can just, um, discuss next week or whatnot?
We also do have other business, any other unscheduled business following poster, posting of this agenda on our agenda.
That's up to the chairman.
Again,
Yeah, if it came in late, we just, uh, give everybody a chance and we'll bring it up next week.
Yeah, if something came in late, I agree. Um, the secretary can put, if it was an email correspondence, uh, Joanne, put whatever you need to on the email correspondence for our next meeting. Um, there is, there is no, any, any unscheduled business that I'm aware of that I have been notified prior to the posting of the meeting. So I'm looking, uh, for a motion to adjourn at 9:17.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Up.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second.
A second.
Okay. Mark made the motion. Amy seconded. I'm going to go to a roll call. Gordon?
Yes.
Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Five so, five zero to adjourn at 9:18. Thank you very much, folks.
Yeah. Good job, everybody.